Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll over, please.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use... Thank you. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. And Director Solcom is bringing in our signup sheet, so I'm not sure. We have nobody on it, I'm getting the word. But that does not prohibit anyone from coming forward at this time. If you'd have something that isn't on the agenda and you would like to address the City Council, please do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anybody. Oh, I thought you were making a move there. Okay. Okay, she's good. Okay. All right, I see no one coming forward to the podium, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed in this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from this agenda. Are there any items that we need to have removed today, the consent? Oh, was that... Okay, were you getting ready to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Council approve the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 3.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, Ms. Yon.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on to the next item is the Mayor's Report, and the first item is one that we don't get to do too often, but it's always exciting when we do, and that's a life-saving award for a couple of our officers. Chief McGlaughlin, are you going to be handing those out? I think I'll come through and do it.
I appreciate that. Officer Laka and Officer Billy, can you please step forward? This is one of the things I really love doing in public, is when I get to stand up here and talk about the great work our officers do for the community. It happens regularly, and I'm happy to say this is not the first time I've had the honor of doing this, and I know that there will be several more in my career that I'll be able to hand out, because we have really good officers that do a lot of good work in the community. Anytime we get to stand up here in front of our citizens and say, "Here they are, here's what they're doing, here's what the police department's doing," is truly something I enjoy doing. In this instance, on November 6th, 2022, Officer Laka and Officer Billy responded to a medical call in the 8,000 block of West 67th Street. And the officers arrived, they recognized that they had a female who was hot breathing, had no pulse, she was losing color in her face, eyes were fixed and open. They also saw evidence of possible drug use, so they administered an art can. They then started doing chest compressions. Officer Laka started doing the chest compressions, Officer Billy prepped the automatic chronic defibrillator. They applied that, administered two shocks. They then continued chest compressions. They remained calm, communicated, and continued life-saving efforts until a medical person arrived who took over. The female regained a pulse, was transported to the hospital in critical condition. She was later upgraded and ended up surviving thanks to their quick work. Congratulations. Here's your life-saving awards for your barns. Great job. Just get in here, get a picture with the mayor, and then I'll get him to meet you with it. Well, get in here with us. We're good?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys. Young.
Okay, that's always exciting. The next item, or item number two, is confirm the appointment of Scott Debold, Ward 1, to the Parks and Recreation Advisor Board Member, Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2023. That's my recommendation to the City Council that he be appointed. He is in the audience. Those of you that don't recognize him, it's that handsome gentleman out there that used to be a former council member for us. Still does a lot for the city and flags for freedom, and we appreciate all that you do. Anyway, I would entertain a motion for that. Oh, excuse me, over here, Ward 1. Okay, Mr. Leahy.
I move that the Council confirm the appointment of Scott Debold to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Silver.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Debold. Next item up would be confirm appointment of George Vessel, Ward 3, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2024. And I would entertain a motion from our Ward...
Can we have a wave his hand?
Yes. Yeah, please, please, George, please.
I'm here.
Yeah. But I met with George, so I don't know if the rest of you got a chance to meet him yet, but thanks for volunteering for this position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. I move that the Council confirm the appointment of George Vessel to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Caldwell, thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the Mayor's Report is confirm the appointment of David Zuckley, Zuckley, at large, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2024. Ms. Yon. Oh, yes, sorry. I messed up again. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zuckley. Good seeing you again. Thank you.
I'll take the motion if necessary.
Okay. Yeah, it's at large, so please do.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Council confirm the appointment of David, is it Zuckley? Zuckley, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2024.
Yeah, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Chavetta.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands. Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, you gentlemen are all welcome to stay. If you would like for the rest of the council meeting, we appreciate your attendance this evening and look forward to working with you on the board, and I'm sure that Director Solcom and all of her staff will be reaching out to you soon for the next meeting, so... But anyway, thank you. Okay, I have a few more items here for the Mayor's Report, just kind of some things that's been happening. Exciting stuff happening in Merriam, and one of them was we had the Mayor's Christmas tree lighting at the Community Center. It was a great event put on by Director Solcom's staff, and our PD helped in that, and our Public Works helped in that in getting the tree together. Even Santa made a guest appearance at that event, so we're excited to see him there as well. The Merriam Park Choir sang for us. They sang Christmas carols, and there was a number of events that was going on inside the Community Center. A lot of our council, almost all of the councilors there as well, too, so I know I'm not giving you any news that you don't already know, because, but at least for the audience, that's one of the things that has happened recently. Ms. Hands and, I think it was Mr. Silver's, I think, attended the My Home Contemporary Furniture Ribbon Cutting Ceremony hosted by the Northeast Chamber of Commerce. They're located at 5400 Antioch, so if you need any furniture out there for Christmas, you know, you can go down and get some, put it under the Christmas tree, and kill two birds with one stone. But they got a ton of furniture in that place, and that was exciting. Ms. Hands, Mr. Leahy, and I were fortunate to be the taste-testing judges at the City of Merriam Chili Cook-Off. Yeah, that was... And there were a lot of great recipes, and of course, everybody had a winning recipe, but we only got to pick the top three, and it was really close and really tough. But the police department took on the top honors again this year, but so kudos to them. They got a little trophy that they get every year. Maybe someday somebody will be, but... Okay, Ms. Hands, Mr. Silver, and Jennifer and I, and Lisa, attended the Jots County, Wyntec County Mayor's Holiday Dinner. Great food networking with county and city officials was conducted. That happened. Ms. Hands and I attended the Heartland Art Competition at the Tim Murphy Art Gallery. The artists were all high school students, and they were from all across the state of Kansas. And so there was a lot of really great things out there. I think that exhibit's still up in it, Director Solcom. So if you haven't seen that, please get down to the Community Center and check out the work. Luckily, I did not have to judge any of those because they were all really good, and I hate breaking kids' hearts, but... So, but anyway, a lot of talented artists out there, and it's an event that the Community Center puts on every year. Several council members and numerous staff were on hand at the Kaufman Foundation, where the Residential Sustainability Grant was recognized by Mark, the American Regional Council, on the resilience, the success stories. And both Director Dyer and David Easley presented details about the program that we have here in Merriam to the audience. Then they sat on a panel as well afterwards to further discuss our programs here in Merriam. So another great example of what our great staff's doing here in Merriam and how Merriam is leading the way in sustainability and resilience, so good job by all those guys. All right, I think that's all the items I have for the Mayor's Report. Next item up, I believe, is consider approval of the 2023 Legislative Agenda. Who's going to be handling that? Oh, there we go.
I am. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jennifer Jones-Lacy, Assistant City Administrator. And before you, you have the 2023 Legislative Agenda for the Kansas State Legislature, which kicks off January 9th of 2023. And this legislative agenda is very similar to prior years. As always, our number one is always SITUS, or the Sales Tax Collection on Automobiles. So that remains at the top because, of course, such a huge portion of our city sales taxes emanate from that source, and so we want to maintain that. And of course, we have our lobbyists from Little Consultants available, Stuart Little and Mallory Lutz, who work hard to make sure that that stays the law of the land, so to speak. Two items have changed from the prior year, and those are regarding federal grants. So this is a new provision that encourages the legislature and state agencies to provide support, coordination, and guidance to cities to maximize investment in Kansas through these federal opportunities made available through American Recovery and Reinvestment Act and the Infrastructure Investment Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act. So these are huge pieces of legislation where local governments will have a lot of opportunity to take advantage of these resources, and all we're asking is that the state help us to do that because it could get pretty complex. And the city has already started to look into that ourselves, to see what we can do to take full advantage of those resources to assist us with some of our infrastructure improvements that we're working on here in Merriam. So that's the only new item. The only other change is the sales tax on food. We basically just edited that because it's now, has been adopted by the legislature from a bipartisan perspective. So we removed the reference that it is the governor's proposal because it was widely accepted. But we do encourage the legislature to make that the, put that into effect in its full form at the beginning of next year because that's going to be a big push, starting with this legislative session per our lobbyist, and it's something that will help all Kansans. So we recommend it to go ahead and move forward with fully eliminating that food sales tax, but maintaining it for cities so that cities can still obtain sales tax on food because it's a big portion of many cities' budget, not ours, as you know, but many cities do rely on that significantly. So those are really the only two changes that we've put into place. Everything else is the same from prior years. When we do this, we always consult Johnson County, as well as other neighboring cities to see what they have looked at, the Northeast Johnson County Chamber and other sources, to kind of make sure that we're in line with, you know, what is important this legislative session. And of course, our lobbyists reviewed this and agreed that this is a good proposal. So this is before you for your acceptance tonight. And we also have the Local Government Day that the League is sponsoring. That's January 25th. So if anyone is interested in attending, Chris and I plan to attend this year and hope that some of you will come with us, and we generally just meet with our state legislatures, talk to them a little bit about our agenda, and then basically just kind of network with them. And the League also has some events that they do in the afternoon and in the evening. So if you're interested, we would love to have you, and we will escort you to speaker. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Jones-Lacy? I see no questions. You must have done an excellent job. I would entertain a motion at this time. Ms. Hands.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Council approve the 2023 Legislative Agenda as presented.
Do you have a motion? Do I hear a second? Ms. Yon.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell. Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones-Lacy. Okay, it looks like our next item on the agenda is the 2022 Grant Program Presentation. Looks like Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. First of all, I'd like to say, obviously, I'm not seeing my normal spot, and it's not because Chief McGlaughlin thought my pants were too red. It's because I have a little bit of a head cold, and I just didn't want to share it during the holiday season, so... That is, if I start coughing or anything, or have a scratchy throat, please bear with me, so... Get this started. All right, so this report's a wrap-up of our grants for 2022. We just completed it and got them all done, so we'll go through kind of the final results of it and how many folks we helped out. And then also cover a little bit about how some of these programs are going to be changing. Some minor changes are going to be happening to them as we go into the 2023 season. So first of all, we'll go do, talk a little bit about residential and sustainability grants. These are two of our most popular grants. Kind of put them all together, also with our downtown grant. We do have an historic downtown grant that 20% reimbursement, like all of our other grants, at $50,000 budgeted for that. Again, we had no takers for that. It's not surprising. A lot of our downtown property owners are sitting, I should say, sitting there. I have a very watchful eye over what's happening with the Corvus Industries project, so it's not surprising that I'm watching and waiting. So other program, again, residential exterior grant program, budgeted $70,000 for it. And then our sustainability grant program, budgeted $30,000 for it. And that last one, that is the grant that the mayor mentioned that we had a presentation at the KC Climate Action and Mark Meeting, and that was on that grant program. So you all have seen this before. Just gives you a pretty good description of what a residential grant program will reimburse folks for. Also, what's not on there is the things we'll do for energy efficiency for a sustainability grant, which is solar power, windows, insulation, do home audits and things like that. Excuse me. All of those things must meet our energy efficiency codes, so all those things. So obviously, you can replace windows, but if you want to do the sustainability, you have to do a more efficient window. So here's a, just a map showing the distribution of all the grants throughout, excuse me, of all our residential sustainability grants throughout the city. Green is sustainable, the red is the residential. As you can see, pretty good distribution throughout the whole city. We did have some people that, just a few that took advantage and did both programs at the same time, which is a great way for folks to do some really awesome improvements to their homes. And a little bit on the statistics, we did 45, had 45 homes participate in the program. Majority of the work that was done was in that roofing, siding, painting category. The next biggest category was the driveway and sidewalk category. I will say that we tried to, kind of, a lot of times, these things are hard to categorize because some of them they do painting and a little bit of landscaping. We just tried to put them in the category with the biggest, the largest part of the grant work. So again, had a really nice number of different projects spread throughout the city. A little bit about that 45 number, last year, that was 29, so a substantial increase in the number of projects that we had. So again, I think that reflects the folks' interest in that grant program. And here's what we did for sustainability. Had 20 houses participate in it. Last year, that number was 13. Again, as this year was last year, windows were the number one thing that folks did, and then followed up by HVAC, your heating and cooling systems, and insulation. The only difference is that this year, we didn't have any solar power. Last year, we did have one participant do solar power. So summary, we had 78 applications. That's 78 applications that your staff, particularly Mr. David Easley, goes through, vets, works through, works through with the property owners to get them on the program and get them prepared to participate in the program. Ended up with 65 homes in the program. Reimbursed $108,000. If you do the quick math, that's about $8,000 more than what we originally budgeted. However, as we got towards the end of the program year, so late summer, early fall, we had folks that had put in applications, very good applications, great projects they were wanting to do, and we thought it was appropriate to take some of the money out of the downtown grant program and put it into this program so folks could do those really nice and great projects they were wanting to do. The average reimbursement was just under $1,700. Probably the, one of the neatest statistics, at least I think, for this is the $780,000 in total improvements that this project does. So we have a massive amount of improvement that folks are doing to their homes throughout the city. Average improvement amount was $12,000, so that was the project folks were doing. So these are substantial projects that folks are doing out there. And then for every $1 city fund, it's leveraged to about $7.20 in private funds. So it's just a couple of examples of some projects. Again, this is before. There's after. You can see siding and deck improvements on here. This is really a transformative one here. You can see this deck, and here's the one they did here. That's a major change. That is an absolutely lovely deck that they put on there. And then this also kind of shows how just a nice new fence and landscaping really will improve the look of a house, so a new fence on it. So again, just a few examples of some of the more transformative things that have been done out there. So going forward into 2023, what are going to be the major changes on here? And again, I shouldn't say major. What are going to be the changes to this program? So we went through these as we did your budget, so during the budget season, so during the summer of this year, we went through these with you. But just as a reminder, for the exterior grant program, going to increase funding from 70 to 120,000. I should have gone back just a little bit. One of the major reasons for these changes, excuse me, was council recognizing that inflationary actions are out there. Every cost has gone up for all things, for labor as well as materials. So in recognizing that, we suggested and recommended changing some of the parameters for the program. So again, increasing the funding for both of these programs, increasing the reimbursement amounts. So right for last, for this year, we did 20%, so we're going to increase it to 30%. Increase the maximum reimbursement. This number here, I was just noticing today as I was going through, this number is incorrect. That should say 3,000, so we're going to increase the max reimbursement from 2,000 to 3,000. I apologize for that. And we're going to reduce the wait time on receiving a grant from 10 to 5 years. Folks in the residential grant that participated the first year, they could participate again next year. And then drop the barrier to participation from 2,500 to 2,000. So that is the minimum investment that property owners can, needs to put in to be a participant in the program. Again, lowering that barrier for folks to participate in the program. Very similar changes on the sustainability grant. Probably the only one that is different is increasing the funding from 30 to 65,000 instead of 120 on the exterior grant program. I will say that we, David gets a number of comments from folks who really are happy with the residential, both the programs, but really happy with the program, really appreciative of staff and the effort they've put on there. Really appreciative of how straightforward the program is for folks to participate in, and appreciative of how the city and the council have supported improving the housing stock and keeping it up to date throughout the city. So the next set of grants I'm going to go through are what we call our assistance grants. So the first one that I want to talk about is the Franchise Fee Rebate Program. This is probably our longest-standing grant program. This has been, we've been doing this since 1996. So this is our 27th year of the Franchise Fee Rebate Program. What this does is, for income-eligible households, we rebate the city's portion of their franchise fees tax. So like on their utilities, on their phone bill, we rebate that back to them. So this is for all households, so you don't necessarily have to be an inter, excuse me, don't have to be a homeowner, but this is for all households throughout the city. So our next one, the next two, they actually are two new programs that we had. The first one, the City Property Tax Rebate, we had 20 households participate in that, rebated just under $13,000. Again, that is just for the city's portion of their property tax. And then the Driveway Repair and Replacement Program had five households in that and did about $47,000 worth of work on that. So again, showing you a little distribution of where that, all those participants who were throughout the city. And then again, changes for next year, again, recognizing the increase in cost of living and inflationary pressures that are occurring, increasing the funding for the franchise fee for all the programs. And probably the biggest change is going to be increasing the household income level for all three of them from 50% of area median income to 80% of area median income. So we're definitely anticipating a much larger number of applicants coming in, a much larger volume of folks that we will be dealing with next year. I will say that we already have the Driveway Repair and Replacement Program. We already have it going right now. We tried to do that in the fall and winter, and then so we can get everything put together in a package to put out in the spring for contractors, and we've already, with the increasing at the 80%, have seen a marked increase in the number of participants, or number of applications we've had for that program. So again, we're anticipating that to have an effect on the other ones as well. So kind of the last little group, the last group of grants I have is our neighborhood... So kind of the last little, the last group of grants I have is our neighborhood grants. Block Party, Compost Stain, and Island Grant. Probably the new one on there is a composting grant, really neat program. Worked with Andrea or Jennifer Alicia Jones and also David also worked together and putting together with the County Extension Office, a really nice program. Let's set that back. Dang it. Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. Apologize. So put together a really nice program of, with the Extension Office, do an online virtual composting program. We did it two times. Had a pretty good participation of folks in that virtual meeting. And then we had four households go all the way through the program and did a compost and container improvement that we did a reimbursement for. So while it says four households, we had a higher level of participation in that virtual workshop. So then the last one is the Island Grant. That is again, the grant that we do through Public Works does to help folks with doing neighborhood improvements to the landscape islands throughout the neighborhood. So again, a little bit of participation throughout, get maps showing participation throughout the city. On that, you'll see that all three of the Island Grants were all done by the Forest Park, in the Forest Park neighborhood. So with that, that is, oh, I guess the one thing I did want to say is we are going to increase the block funding program to 5,000 and increase the maximum reimbursement. Again, recognizing the increased cost of goods and materials to, from 200 to 300. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Any questions for Director Dyer? Ms. Hands.
At some point, obviously, it doesn't have to happen today. I would like to see a historical graph of the franchise fees, the block parties to show how they're moving up. I know you referred to the previous year, but they've been around for a while.
Yeah, we can, I can definitely do, probably for the, to do the graph, the two that we have, obviously been going the longest, will be the franchise fee and the Residential Exterior Grant Program. So easily can do something like that for you. Not a problem.
And I would trust that you would just tell us what's more meaningful, whether it's the number of homes involved because I'm not sure that looking at dollars is all that meaningful.
We can do, we can put something together for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Director Dyer? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the update. All right, let's see what's next. We're not writing. Well, I think we're up for the CIP update. I think we have Street Superintendent Randy Fein's going to help us with that one. Director Dyer gets closed out there.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Randy Fein, Superintendent. I've got your December CIP update. First, we have West Frontage. This has been completed. Thank you for approving the final payment. That'll kick in the two-year warranty period. If you haven't driven it, it's a nice, clean look and the railroad tracks are pretty smooth. So I want to give props to our project coordinator. He kept the contractor on task and under budget, about 122,000 under budget. So. Next up, we have 55th Street. The, this is from Merriam Drive to West City Limits. I'd say about 95% of the curb has been done. If you haven't been over there, they got a portion of asphalt completed from Merriam Drive to Knox. And then they're continuing to work on the south side, changing out driveway approaches and adding new sidewalk on that side. In addition, they're getting ready to start the streetlight installation as well. A substantial completion is May 31st, 2023. Next up, we are doing storm pipe lining improvements. We had bids on December 2nd. Thank you for approving the bid award to Municipal Pipe Tool. We used them last year. So we're familiar with their product and we're happy with the results. Various locations, Antioch, if you want Antioch, and then a couple on Knox. Lastly, we have Merriam Drive Street Improvements. This is from Johnson Drive to 55th. BHC is close to finalizing the plans. And final public meeting is this Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the community center. Is there any questions?
Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Hi Randy, thanks for being here.
Yep.
I have two questions, really quick, just one out of curiosity. On the 55th Street between Merriam Drive and Knox, I noticed that there is already a section on the new asphalt that has been cut and then filled in and reasphalded. What was that?
Was this where the manhole lids were?
I thought it was larger than that, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe not.
I'll have to look into that. I'm not sure who would be cutting into it, but...
It looked like it was a big, like, eight by eight square.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it looked like there were two. And then my other question is off of 55th Street on Switzer. It looks like there's a small section close to 55th Street where there might be, there's a crack running with the roadway, parallel with the roadway in the middle of the Merriam Lane. And I didn't know if that was something that you all have noticed and if it was anything of concern.
On 55th?
Like a failure. No, on Switzer.
On Switzer, okay. I'll look into that. I think Shawnee administered that project, but yeah, we'll check up on that.
Okay, but on top of that, I want to say that everything I've seen happening on 55th Street looks amazing.
Good, and it might start winding down with the weather getting cold, but they want to keep on going, so.
Any other questions for Superintendent Fein? It looks like you're off the hook.
Cool.
Thank you.
Hey, if I could just do a plug for Merriam Drive Improvements. There, I've been told that there will be a virtual VR video. Did you? Yeah, the, of the project at the open house. So it might be something cool to bring you out. You can actually take a look at the street and perhaps live in that virtual world for a second. So we're pretty excited about that.
Thanks for sharing. Informational items, we just have Parker Rec Advisory Board Minutes. Do we have any questions, Director Slocum? She's already answered. I guess not. Thank you for attending though. And do we have any other staff items before we... Ms. Engel.
I do, I've just got a couple. In the past, councilmembers have asked about blank copies of our Christmas cards. You, if you checked in your drawer, there should have been a handful of them deposited in your drawer if you want to use them to send to individual constituents. Poinsettos are here. Please feel free to take one at the conclusion of the meeting. And January 9th is our next scheduled city council meeting. So we don't have a second one in December unless for some reason we need to call a special meeting, which I don't anticipate, but we always could. But don't show back up for the next one, we won't be here. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel?
I'd asked you a little bit ago about the Chipotle and the TIF requirements for you and the TIF funds. And it's December of next year.
The completion date is by December of next year, December of this year. So we, they have submitted and we have paid them their first disbursement, which was due upon pad-ready. So we've submitted their first reimbursement. We are told that, I think they, Mitch told us that they were going to be open by the 31st. We're not quite sure they're going to hit being open by the 31st of this year. But yeah, for TIF completion, it's next year.
Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Engel? Do we have an executive session?
We do, Mayor, for 15 minutes in the back room.
Okay. Do you have the wording for that?
Sure, I do. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I move that the governing body recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2, which allows the governing body to recess into executive session for consultation with the city attorney on matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and community development director. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 7:55.
Okay, we have a motion. I hear a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move we adjourn for 2022.
Oh, for the rest of 2022. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.